I would like to call this July meeting of every county board of education. First, I would like to have a motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Certainly.
Mr. Dozier, make a motion.
Yes.
Second is Ms. Evans, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay. Motion to adopt the agenda is approved. For tonight's opening devotional, I'm taking this from a devotional book of mine called Devotions for the Beach. Since we all kind of wish this book was available.
So you just come and learn.
I know people, and you most likely do as well, when they go to bed at night, they turn on a sound machine or an app on their phone to hear the calming sounds to lull them to sleep or to calm the outside noises of their day. Some of these sounds are sounds of nature, like the babbling roots or bird songs. But according to amazon.com, the most popular sleep sounds requested of Alexa are beach sounds, specifically waves. One, once the sound captures you, it lulls you into an almost trance-like state. Minutes, even hours, can pass before you know it. To get there, you must be silent, you must stay there, you must be still. And the waves will draw you into a deeper silence, deeper stillness, deeper, deeper still. The rhythm and repetition, the graceful waves, reduces stress and calms nerves. In an instant, the same environment can make us anxious and fearful. Think of words like crashing waves and roaring surf. These words can also describe stormy conditions in nature and in our lives. When you listen to the ocean sounds and stand on the beach and feel the calming lull, think of the storms that have visited this exact spot on the beach now in your life. Are there experiences that have brought you both joy and sorrow where peace and crisis coexist? Think of this simple statement from Mark 4:39, "Peace be still." And the wind ceased, and there was a great calm. And now I would like to call on Riley Douglas and Sandra Douglas to come lead us in our pledge of allegiance of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we move on to our public comment period. We have one speaker who's going to link, sign up, and speak. It comes about, oh, you'll see.
Thank you.
And before he speak, I have something I need to read, but you can go to the sidebar. To ensure a respectful and productive environment during public comment sessions, we ask all participants to follow these guidelines. One, the time limit. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Please be mindful of the time to allow everyone the opportunity to speak. Number two, respectful conduct. Comments must remain respectful and focused on issues, not individuals. It is not appropriate to name specific personnel or make personal attacks during public comments. Ordinarily, participation. Speakers will be called in the order in which they are signed up. Please wait to be recognized before speaking. Board response. The board may not respond to comments during the meeting, but will take all input, input under advisement. For more details and guidance, you may refer to Board Policy Code 2310, Public Participation at Board Meetings. We appreciate your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and cohesive atmosphere.
And that's longer than I'm putting.
Hey, good thing they didn't time me.
Okay, good evening, folks. My name is Earl Leake, and I am a volunteer in the county. First of all, Dr. Roseborough, welcome. I want to talk about education for just a brief moment. I think what we need here is a paradigm shift. And that is just a major different way that we think about and work as it relates to improving education in Montgomery County. Now, it is true to say that we haven't quite seen the results that we would like to see. Now, that's an uncomfortable truth. But we have to be in a position where we can have uncomfortable conversations if we are going to actually work together and improve our current situation. We have some tools. We have the early college, we have the central high school, we have the CTE building and its programs, and we also work with the Montgomery Community College. But those are tools, and from there comes a plan. We need a plan. And so now we have a different person in superintendent's office, and we will expect to see differently. But we also expect to see different from the Board of Education. Because collectively, those two bodies, the superintendent's office and the Board of Education, provides the leadership. And we need that leadership, and it should be undergirded by greater accountability, by community engagement, data-driven, and less focused on activities and more focused on results. We can do this, but we're going to have to do it together. There is no word that we need to do that we can't do if we work together. Now, AI would probably say that differently. But I'm saying it for effect. If we are going to improve education in this county, the time is to start. So, last thing. I think, seriously, we ought to look at our strategic planning process. I think it could use some help. Now, you might say that I've, we've had professional help. Well, I would tell you, you need a different professional help. So I would suggest that you seriously look at how you do strategic planning. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our recognitions, and I will call on the family of Ms. Helen Lyles' family. I feel like each month I have a connection. And of course, Ms. Helen worked at Royal and during the cafeteria when I was there, and Ms. Shelby looked after my children. I don't know, Joe. Montgomery County Board of Education, Resolution of Esteem of Helen Lyles' Family. Whereas our Heavenly Father in His infinite love and wisdom saw fit to call home Helen Lyles' family on April 22nd, 2025. And whereas her dedication to Montgomery County Schools for 22 years of good service were a living testament of her integrity and skill. And whereas her loss will be deeply felt not only by those with whom she served, but also throughout our entire community and county. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education goes on record in expressing a sense of real loss and regret in her passing. That a copy of this resolution be conveyed to her family as an indication of our deep sympathy, and that a copy of the same be filed as a part of the permanent minutes of the Board of Education. Shelby. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to call up Dr. Karen Roseborough for other recognitions.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to call up Dr. Caden to come up to help me with our next recognition for our Employee of the Month.
Okay. We'd like to call up Ms. Tasha Medley. Ms. Medley brings over 20 years of dedicated service to Montgomery County Schools, where she has consistently demonstrated a deep commitment to students and families. A proud Montgomery County native, she is passionate about encouraging young people to be their best each day. Her extensive experience and strong work ethic makes her an invaluable asset to students' and student services team. Known for her simplicity and unwavering dedication, Ms. Medley consistently goes above and beyond to support the district. Every decision she makes is guided by one core principle, what is best for student outcomes. As a true team player, she fosters collaboration and positivity in the workplace. She's not only reliable and effective as an administrative professional, but also an inspiration and role model to students, parents, colleagues, and the broader community. It is truly a privilege to work alongside someone who exemplifies excellence, compassion, and integrity in all she does. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, three, two, one. Yes, it's been a quiet month without your fields, without me clacking up and down the halls.
And next, we have another special recognition. This recognition goes to Wade Almond. This certificate is proudly presented to Wade Almond in recognition for your outstanding leadership, dedication, and unwavering support as interim superintendent of Montgomery County Schools. Your steady guidance and commitment to students, staff, and the community have made a lasting impact during your time during this transition. We really appreciate you.
All right, three, two, one.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. We've had a few requests to hold it until after closed session. So we'll move on to Roman numeral number one, which is the North Carolina Public Schools will produce globally competitive students. And I will call on Dr. Roseborough about the end of year review dates.
As you can see up there at the top, we have some tentative dates for our end-of-year review. And the purpose of the end-of-year review is for us to look at our student achievement data as well as any data points that we have in terms of positive student outcomes, in terms of their social, emotional well-being as well. But also taking an in-depth look at how well our students are performing, not just holistically, but by individual student groups as well. And we'll also be looking at our long-term goals for achievement for each one of those student groups. And I refer to student groups instead of subgroups because no one is subconn. So we'll talk about student groups there. The reason why these dates are tentative is because we still do not have our science scores available, and they may not be available to us until October. So these are tentative dates, and we will also bring back some October dates as well for consideration because the scores are in March. Therefore, we cannot speak on them publicly until we have all the information.
Except one of those dates.
Let me ask this question. What are those dates due?
September 11th, which is a Thursday.
Right.
September 16th is a Tuesday.
Right.
And September 18th is a Thursday.
Okay. Let me ask this question. Is you, so we don't meet twice? Is there any reason we can't wait till October till we have the science rates and we can do it all at one time?
Yes, that's what I would advise when the dates were first discussed.
Right.
We got information that it could be October.
Okay. We, rather than having a meeting in September and then turn around again and meet in October, I would personally rather do it all in October. I mean, is there any reason it has to be done in September?
Yes. And we could do it like it hopefully will have got to get in October.
Right, right.
So we can resume the meeting. Okay. Any information to do that?
I know that motion.
Okay, Mr. Dozier, make, will you say your question, Mr. Dozier? Make a motion.
That instead of meeting in September, we wait until October so we have all the information going?
Wait until October for our end-of-the-year review so that we have all the scores. Mr. Dozier's motion, go have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Smith.
And then I'll just amend or ask that we vote on that in our office meeting because that's in two weeks. Sound good?
I buy it. Because you're asking me to date.
Yes, yeah. Okay. So the motion is that we will wait until October with the amendment that we should have dates maybe for our August meetings. With Mr. Dozier making the motion, Smith, second, all in favor?
Uh.
On those. Motion carries. We'll look at that then next month at our August meeting. All right, now, Dr. Roseborough, I'll call on you for our self-discussion.
And I'm going to pull it out.
Mr. Alvin, you're the drive foreman. Thank you. Recently, House Bill 959 was signed into law on July 1st, and it introduces new requirements for our public schools regarding cell phones, internet, and social media. And many of you may have already heard about this action coming to light. So the key date for us is January 1st, 2026, where local school districts must adopt and update their policies on internet safety and the use of wireless devices by students. Our action right now is that we need to update our policies and student handles before the start of the '25-'26 school year. And this will be key discussion at our upcoming board meetings to discuss internet safety policy, wireless communication policies, and instruction on social media and safety. But today, I'm going to dive a little bit deeper into our current policy, which is wireless communication devices policy that we already have in place, which is 4318. Looking at House Bill 959, our current policy addresses many aspects of the wireless device use in House Bill 959. But there are new requirements at play that we must adhere to. First is, we need administrative regulations since we already have an existing policy. And the regulation, the point of the regulation is for us to discuss how the policy would actually be implemented and into our existing policy so it attaches itself to the existing policy. The purpose of 4318 regulation is for us to address the mandates in House Bill 959. Looking at prohibiting the devices during instructional time. Specific exceptions are for children with exceptionalities, which would be our special education students, and for medical purposes. And also, we have to establish clear consequences for violation. We also have some other factors to consider that I'll mention towards the latter part of the presentation. And then for internet safety, we have to look at limiting student access to age-appropriate materials on school-provided devices and services. We have to safeguard students using emails, chat rooms, and other electronic communication. We prohibit unauthorized student access to district data, prevent access to websites and software that don't protect our student personal information, and prohibit and prevent student access on social media platforms unless it's teacher-directed for educational purposes. This expands from our child protective act of policies that may require internet filtering and software updates. And we already have some of these things in place. A lot of districts use a mechanism called GoGuardian where they can monitor the use of the internet from anywhere in the district. It also prohibits students from using and displaying or having wireless communication device turned on during instructional time. And also, it includes cell phones, tablets, laptops that may not be district devices but personal devices. Because we used to have a policy in place in a lot of districts called Ring on Device, and that's no longer. And then gaming devices and smart watches. So those are some of the things that we have to consider when looking at our current cellphone policy. The exceptions would be that teachers are authorized to use some of their cellphone privileges during, for instructional purposes or emergencies. And in our case, for our district, right now, teachers will still be able to have their devices on them. We will ask that they not be displayed or owned during the instructional time. They use their discretion to determine when would be an appropriate time to use the cellphone, have to excuse themselves out of the room in case of an emergency, when they can step outside of the classroom. So we're using some reasonable discretion with the piece about the teachers or for emergencies until we can outfit our building with IP phones, which I understand we currently do not have that across the board in the district. So that's something that we're going to have to prioritize in terms of our budget meetings forward and continuously having a plan to update that system.
What is an IP phone? I mean, I'm sorry, IP phone?
It integrates within technology. It has texting features too. It's like a this phone or a phone on the wall in the classroom. We used to have loading phones, like old loading phones.
Right.
These phones are more high-tech, where you can text, you can call immediately in emergency at a tap of a button. You can call over the intercom from classroom, main office, anywhere in the program. Required for students, healthcare due to documented medical condition can be required, required for students that have an IUP or 504 because we know some of our students with diabetes have to be able to check their insulin levels using their phones. And then also, this policy must outline consequences for violation and be submitted to DPI annually by September 1st. So for the '26-'27 school year, we'll have to implement an instruction on social media safety, and that will probably be at the beginning of the year when we go over our code of conduct, where we know that it has happened sort of in a single style so that we can verify that all the information, not to all students. So the state board will add instruction on social media effects on social, emotional, and physical health to the standard course of study. And it will also provide at least once in elementary, once in middle, and twice in high school about the impact and effects on using cell phones and social media. So our disciplinary consequences. Right now, these are kind of loose before we actually go tight. So we have to see how well we can do with loose. And right now, first offense would be a warning and redirection and parent contact. The second offense could be student conference, parent contact by the teacher. Third offense, office referral, parent contact, devices confiscated, and parent must pick it up. And then aggravating factors for more severe consequences. Using devices to reproduce test, hack, bully, incite violence, sexting, or any other serious policy violations. For device confiscation, we will first, unauthorized use will result in the device being taken to by school administration. Confiscated devices are returned only to the parent or legal guardian. Will not be returned back to the student. Severe violations, we'd be looking at our code of conduct to see how, what level of consequence because it could be a great or a portable offense depending on what the student actually was involved with and their liability. Students are personally and solely responsible for the security of their wireless communication devices. And you know, we, those of us in education, I don't know how many times we have heard, they stole my device, I can't buy my device, the teacher took my device, and now my device is broken, and they want to hold us liable for that. And the Board of Education will have a statement, which we did on our wireless communication plan, that we are not responsible for the theft, loss, or damage of devices.
We have cellphone policy for the whole fifteen years I've been in the force. It's never been enforced. Teachers don't want to play police and get out of any idea. It's just been a disaster. How has this changed? How is this different than the policy that we already have?
It's more expensive.
It's what?
More expensive.
More expensive?
Yes, expensive. And we did not have a law to back us up, and a lot of teachers were actually skeptical about enforcing the rules and being responsible for the devices. They always thought that they were responsible with devices. And oftentimes, as administrators, they felt like, well, they're going to side with the parent, and then I become the bad guy. I think this policy allows us to adequately support our teachers, our administrators. And furthermore, there are a lot of students that are in favor of this policy as well so that we can give back to the business of teaching and learning. I mean, it's not as though.
My recommendation that we take the cell phone instead of principal and assistant principal to be there at the same time. So it's not going to teach you for one system.
So they feel the support.
Well, is that, and then we're necessarily to say, it didn't happen on my own. Why do you continue here?
That's what I agree.
And.
I lost it.
And one of the complaints I would hear from students is, well, my teacher's on the ball while she's supposed to be teaching me. So, I mean, the law doesn't address teachers. It just addresses students, correct?
Did you?
Yes.
What's worse than?
That's, in you policy.
And I think, I would say. We'll have the parameters for the teachers. They're not, that means it's a bad room. Just making sure that they're not using their devices in the presence of students and working with our principals on setting those parameters and our leadership.
Dr. Roseborough, my question would be, so it says that we have to have this internet safety policy by January of 2026. What are we, what are we starting in August this school year? What are, what, what are we starting in Montgomery County Schools?
In August, we're going to be working with our principals on setting those parameters, making sure they're familiar with the policy and the law. And then from there, we're going to make sure that they understand the consequences and that they must, because it's, we are starting. There will be accountability there in terms of if you're not enforcing it, there are consequences, and we're charged with making sure that our principals are following the implementation from House Bill 959. They'll need to do something.
So we're going to start enforcing it in August?
Yes, yes. That's, that was kind of my question, even though it says, the, this is from our legislators that it had to be by January 1st, but we're going to do it. Yeah, that's the deadline for the internet safety policy is at the start of the '25-'26.
Oh, okay. So, okay, that was, that's what I needed.
Then my next question is, how are we going to convey this to our parents?
So prior to school starting, they will receive a letter home, letting them know about House Bill 959 outlining the consequences. And I will also have Ms. Lithico to design our no-cellphone or cellphone-free classroom signs upon our classroom doors as well as the front doors of our schools because we already need a place of business as well. We've seen banks and doctor's offices have to do the same thing. So we will be following some of their protocol for this type of thing as well. But we will, and we will call home to and text message because you have to have three modes of communication on to our families.
A lot of the problems that we've found out in years is the address of the cellphone that the parent gives. The administration at the beginning of the year, they no longer have two months. So then they say, well, I never knew, nobody had told me. So.
So we're going to try that three modes of communication and then make sure the kids cover that as well. First things going. Just overly in the day.
Right.
The message.
Okay, so I have a, I have a question. And I might need an elementary person to help me because there is something that the teachers and teachers assistants take pictures throughout the day. Because there's something that the teachers and teachers assistants take pictures throughout the day of the kids working on their activities, and then post it to something, it's not Facebook, it's something of that like. But I feel like there's a lot of that going on, and I don't want that to end because I think parents enjoy seeing what their child's doing during the day. So is there something that they can attach to their phone, or something that says unofficial work business, or something? They're not, they're not scrolling, they're actually taking pictures and documenting growth and learning, so am I, am I saying that right?
So the, the districts that have already enacted cellphone policies, they've met with their administrative teams, and they've talked about putting those parameters on Class Dojo, like to, making sure the teachers know their appropriate time to upload that, and they can do that from their laptops, they can upload those pictures to their parents on their laptops.
I just don't want to put extra work, I mean, if you're kindergarten teacher, you don't have time to, maybe to put it, you know, like, um, I don't know, I just something that would just say, hey, I'm actually doing official work here.
I'll pass that stuff, so we make sure we discuss.
I don't want to drag the additional work to the, to the teachers, which is, I don't know where I'm at with that.
I may be mistaken, but I believe all the schools have a specific person, right, and you are, you are in contact with, so it's that person's job, not every teacher's job to upload stuff.
In kindergarten, our each teacher or assistant is taking pictures.
Yeah, they, they take the pictures to upload on Class Dojo, but I have a marketing and media representative for each school that they're the ones that send the pictures to me. Like, I'm not in any of their classes.
But you use those for like Facebook things, yeah.
It's one thing to hold your phone up like this and cut the picture, it's another thing to be on there like that.
Yeah, no, they take the picture and they send it to the dojo, so there will be a few typing, but
But not a lot.
Not scrolling.
Right. I, I think they should be able to take that out.
Now we're going to run in rule number six to our superintendent update.
I appreciate you standing up there for me, so thanks. Okay, uh recently in the news, um many of you are already aware that our, some of our federal funds have been temporarily uh withheld, and those um funding sources are Title I, Title II, Title IV, and uh Title IV Part B. We do still have our Title I, um oh five oh, or I guess managed, uh students still at play. But Title I Part C is for our migrant children. Part A is supporting effective um instructions, and that could be additional um personnel that we have in place to help support interventions and enrichment for students. Title III Part A, English language acquisition, that would be our support for our English language learners. That could also be teaching positions at play. And then Title uh IV Part A, for student support and academic enrichment, that could be our tutoring support. Any type of wraparound um supports from student services um would be impacted by Title IV Part A. And then Title IV Part B, uh we currently do not have a twenty-first century mortgage cycle. Many of our districts in North Carolina, they do. And these are the amounts uh that North Carolina normally would have had in terms of their loans from the previous school year. Uh the Sand Hills region also provided an update to just let districts know how much money exactly they would uh probably lose as a result of uh temporary withdrawal of the grants if they are withdrawn. But right now, they're just withheld, they're just stalled for the money. So due to delays in state awards and planning allotments, um we have been impacted. So we will, we had some carryover funds that we can go ahead and use for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. But um if we were to lose this federal funding uh going forward, it would be about two hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven. Then additionally, um some more, it's not up here, but I wanted to share some updates uh we knew that we got this week is that uh good news is that our Strong Connections Grant uh was recommended to the state board for funding. It should be received in those funds, it's a hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars to support instructional supplies for guidance counselors, basic school supplies for students, healthy snacks for students, our food backpack program, items for our school food pantries, and items for the school clothing closets. Um this is a positive grant, and um want to make sure that recognition goes out to Mr. Omen and Ellen Jones who assisted in writing this Strong Connections grant. Uh starting spring twenty twenty-five, any students who don't pass the end-of-grade uh test will be able to retest during the school year. We believe that this is a win for us. Previously, uh we, uh many of our districts across the state uh saw a surge in scores after retesting in our highest need districts. So for our district, this is a win um for us to be able to retest during the school year and not just in the summer. They will hopefully remain getting that testing during the summer as well as have two opportunities to actually retest. Previously, it was counted um only in our achievement and our growth. And another win for us is that it will now count towards achievement and growth for our school districts, and we're very happy about that.
So then we'll be retested in the spring and, and possibly in the summer.
Well, they will retest in the summer during the school year, but if you're high school, yes. Then for our one hundred plan update, um just to let you know what's going on in terms of me being named this new superintendent and how we're coming together, uh that the Summer Conference for Teachers is actually happening, it's a lot of professional development, and the teachers actually volunteer to participate, and this opportunity is headed under the leadership of Dr. Jonathan Perkins from July fifteenth to July seventeenth. So we're having our first professional development meeting conference for our teachers. Uh strategic planning and team-building workshops, strategic planning sessions will start um with our district leadership team on July twenty-first and twenty-second. This will be instrumental in us laying the groundwork um in the future direction of the district. Currently in North Carolina, we use a platform called Easy Star for strategic planning, for school-level planning as well as district approval planning. And we do have outside help that's coming to assist with that from North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to be sure that we are well-aligned with what the needs are for the district and that we have a concerted effort towards those community. Uh also, uh Complication is on August fourth, we hope that you will all be there to help us. Um our theme is going to be boots on the ground, because that's exactly what we're wanting to be doing, that we're all in for kids. We're working towards um excellence, opportunity, and unity. And so we would love to see the, all of our staff members, leaders, board members, any community folks that would like to come out to join us. Need some boots, you need cowboy boots, cowboy boots. Uh but not just supposed to get us a variety of boots to demonstrate that we are boots on the ground. We plan to be in our buildings and supporting our kids and supporting our teachers. But our central office should always be in service of it's gonna be at the high school. Uh Leadership Institute for Principals and Central Office will take place on July twenty-eighth through the third verse, on the twenty-eighth. We'll be wrapping up the thoughts um from our strategic planning session. And then we're gonna take that information on the road to get input um from our community members, because we do have several uh community listening sessions. I think we need to go to them. We have the back, the back-to-school bash on the twenty-eighth that I forgot to mention. Looking forward to that, that'd be my first time at the back-to-school uh bash for Montgomery County, so I'm excited. It's gonna be hot.
Or possibly, right?
Might need to bring individual little fans.
Right.
But then uh we're gonna take the strategic planning piece on the road, where we're gonna have our community listening sessions. They will have an opportunity to see what district leaders have been working on and what they think about the path forward for the district. We want to gain their input about what they think, we want them to add to that information. Um and so we've identified the following uh sites and areas for our community conversations. They will be at school sites, um but we are going to be at Mount Gilead. Um I think we talked about being at West Millstone for the Mount Gilead Community Meeting um for Candor and Star, I believe we said we're gonna be in Madison and Candor. Okay, okay, and then um for Troy, we will be at Central. Are there any other places that you all would recommend and would like for us uh to engage regarding these areas? We're also gonna reach out to some of our community groups and nonprofits to get their insight as well.
And and we really, how are we gonna get this information out?
Uh Maddie, yes, Maddie's going to submit the dates um out on social media, text messaging. I'll, we're having suppliers and working with this.
But Candor's gonna be a decent deal, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
We might always say Candor, Visko, we're using Talib Visko.
So that's what we need to do there, we need to add Visko. Maybe Visko should have their own. Do you think they need their own, or you just want them to add the, the big? That way everybody seems that they're represented, yes, thank you for that. I do have some additional um information to share with the public. Um board members need to be advised that we received a public information request from the Montgomery Herald. In response, um we will be providing our Friday updates, ensuring that any sensitive personnel information will be appropriately redacted um prior to the release. And then also, um there's been some discussion about some of the work that we have going on here at the central office. And so we would like for the public to be informed that uh during a recent incident with maintenance uh there was a disturbance of asbestos containing the floor tiles in the superintendent's office prior to superintendent coming on board, uh because they were just trying to ensure that everything was in proper order. They were going to welcome the superintendent, and so the work was stopped immediately. No one was at risk, there was no safety risk, and that we're currently going through the abatement um process. And the flooring in that area will be replaced with some inexpensive uh vinyl flooring uh that Mr. Woodard has identified, and so it should be low-maintenance, water-resistant flooring, and the option just offers a more uh modern appearance in that area. Uh but again, they were just trying to do the thing for the incoming superintendent, and we're very appreciative of that.
We want to discuss, um so at this time, if there's anything else before we make that motion, is there anything else that the board members would like to have discussed at upcoming meetings? We can go ahead and make a note of that so that our, our central office staff can be aware of that and be prepared for our next meetings. Is there any, any concerns or anything that, I know that Um I know some, I had mentioned to me about the town of Troy possibly closing Byrd Street with the hospital construction, and I didn't know if that's something we would like our, our um team here to look into and report on that at our August meeting so we'll know. Just, it may not affect our buses at all, but I just think we need to be prepared. That's right, so we need, I, I feel like we need to hear about that in August.
I, I don't know if it will, but I've been told it will, so we just need to figure that out. Bruton Street runs right by.
I mean, I know which one Bruton is, but which one are they talking about, the one that's
The one between the old brick building and the existing hospital.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, that one. Because they're actually going to demolish the old brick building, build a new hospital there, and then they're gonna demolish the old section and make it into a green space, and then that section of the road will be closed. The initial renderings, I'm sorry to overstep the earth, but I don't mean to, but the initial renderings are still showing the emergency uh entrance on Bruton Street. Um so they're, they're saying that the street that runs beside the school should not be impacted, should not be the key words.
But they're, they're not gonna close Wood, what, that's what, Wood Street that runs up Hospital Hill? That, that T-bones in the Bruton Street. Yeah, that, they're not gonna close that.
No, not Wood Street, it's the one, it's the one between the existing brick building and the hospital, that little section.
Right.
So we just need to check to see what the impact would be going forward.
We just can't see when you pull a Troy on Main Street.
I, I had heard that the Great Fund, they're not gonna do it in the west. That's, that's what they're
We just want to be informed, right, make sure the safety of our kids and our parents, you know, teachers. If there's nothing else, then I do need a motion to go into closed session. Okay, Mr. Blay, second. Mr. Dozier, all in favor, move. Um now that we're back in open session, I do need a motion um to approve our consent agenda. Mr. Dozier?
Second.
Second, Ms. Taylor, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Let me show that I abstained.
Dr. Robledo, same, and motion carried, and so now I need a motion to Mr. Dozier, second, Ms. Taylor. All in favor?